First of all, we'll talk about the format. And this is a little bit different than the previous one just because of time. We're going to try to speed things up a little bit with five candidates. There'll be a two-minute opening statement from each candidate, a one-minute answer to each question. And of course, the person being asked the question first will have time for a 30-second rebuttal rather than a minute as we had for the previous forum, and then a two-minute closing statement. And once again, if you'd like to run through your -- Jackie, run through your cards there. You've got a 30-second card, a 15-second card, and a "time's up" card. Did I miss something? Did you have an extra one?
No, I was thinking I might have to hit my head.
Oh. So please, stick to the time limits, and if you can make your answers even briefer at that degree, but the more -- faster we can go, the more questions we can get in. So we're going to start off our opening statement with Jason Reckert, and you have up to two minutes for your opening statement.
Wow, I was really hoping I wouldn't be first. I'm really nervous. I am going to be your candidate for city council, and I'm going to be your people's candidate. I'm going to listen to you guys. That's my big thing, and I'm going to be your voice. I'm not happy with the way things are going. I know a lot of people out there aren't happy with the way things are going. We need to have a voice to be heard on our city council. That's what we're going to do. We're going to get back to the people are going to run the government again, not the government running the people. That's pretty much all I have. I'm not a big speaker. I'm not a politician. I'm just a citizen.
Okay, thank you. Stan? Stan Cleveland.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak to the people today. I want to thank the Chamber of Commerce and U of City for holding the forum. Eight years ago, I ran for supervisor. I do have a history. I do have a record of serving the people. I would like to give a little accounting of that for when I first ran. My original flyer, "Opening accountable and responsive." I've proven that. Elected official puts your interests above their own. I have proven that. Strong law enforcement and fire protection. Successful and proven that. Cooperative between cities and our county to solve our traffic congestion problems. Inasmuch as we could, we have worked together to start Highway 99 and then recognize that while Sutter County was going to get the Highway 99 fixed first outside of the county limits, the city limits, it was agreed through a meeting, in a cooperative meetings, that U of City would come next, and then we would solve the problems of Highway 99 access. Financial support for levy districts and their flood prevention efforts. That is an absolutely unquestionable success at federal, state, and local level. I was the 2010 representative and actually with one of our water resources director. We came up with the idea of the accelerated feasibility study that was used to be the pilot program for the nation. He was a great mentor in that, and I thank him very much, Dan Peterson, for having mentored me to become actually also a certified floodplain manager with FEMA so that I could go inside the committees, actually taught with them, and they actually invited me to speak because I wasn't just a politician. I was part of a solution. Creation of an industrial corridor along Highway 99. These things are said to point out that I've already been doing what is also needs to be done within U of City and to continue these efforts to make it happen. Thank you.
Preet Dibbal.
Good evening. First of all, I want to say thank you to the U of Sutter Chamber, the Appeal Democrat, and KUBA for putting together this forum, and thank you to all of you for taking the time to be here and to support us. So thank you very much. My name is Preet Dibbal. Born and raised right here in U of City. I've attended all of our local schools. Yes, I'm proud to say I am a honker, and my daughter is proud to say she is a falcon. As a young child, I worked our local farms here, peaches and prunes for the most part, and I also worked in our local canneries. Harder packing was one of them. And I don't eat ketchup to this day because of what I saw in there. And my daughter will never understand that. I went on to pursue my associates, my bachelors, as well as my masters in public administration with a concentration on health. I've been a planning commissioner here for 10 years, two years with Sutter County, eight years with the city, two of the last years right now, and currently I'm the chair. I've also been in management and administration, including HR, budgets, contracts, succession, and strategic planning, the last 16 years with Department of Corrections as well as Department of Real Estate. I've been with the Economic Development Advisory Group for U of City, both in 2008 as well as this year, and I am ready to make a bigger contribution to this place, to U of City. It has given me, my family, an opportunity to grow prosperous and be prosperous and successful in our own means. It has provided my family and myself a safe haven and a place that I will always call home. So thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to share with you tonight.
Thank you. John Buckland is the incumbent.
Thank you, Bob. And I want to thank the U of Sutter Chamber of Commerce. Oops, I should know better. I'd like to thank the U of Sutter Chamber of Commerce, the Appeal Democrat, and KUBA for hosting this forum. In addition, the other candidates that are here, that you get to hear from tonight and vet their responses and their involvement in the community, and I thank each of you for taking time out of your night to be here. The vision of guiding U of City is simple. We have a mission plan, and that's to anticipate and provide for the needs of the community through quality service, through innovation and leadership today and into the future. The execution of the vision isn't as simple as the statement is itself, and that's where leadership and clear direction to staff gets a high level of service to each of you. Projects that I led in the last four years include opening of the Feather River Parkway, gaining funding for the Phase Two project of the Feather River Parkway. It's currently on fire, just in case anybody saw the smoke down there. The Midtown Sewer Replacement and Relocation Project, the Franklin Waterline Extension Project, all the way out past Franklin School, and securing unprecedented water origin agreements with the State of California and the Department of Water Reclamation. We've secured those rights through 2035, impacted by our current drought. And we opened the new Sutter County or the Sutter Animal Services Facility, and additionally, I secured a $17.1 million grant for our Fifth Street Bridge replacement project. I enjoy the countless hours that I get to spend with the community, meeting with businesses, with liberal groups, with conservative groups, and my time's up. But the most of all, I like meeting with all of you on your front lawns and just talking about what the business of U of City is. I look forward to representing you for the next four years. Thank you.
Daria Ali.
Good evening. My name is Daria Ali, and I also want to begin by thanking the U of Sutter Chamber of Commerce, the Appeal Democrat, KUBA, and especially the city of U of City for using us this evening for their first streaming onto YouTube. What a fun experience for us. We can go back and critique ourselves. I am an ambassador for the U of Sutter Chamber of Commerce, and so I would like to just say that for the past three or four campaign series, I have co-chaired this event. So it's a real pleasure to be on this side of the forum and to be here representing and looking to be your city council person. I'm a financial representative with Martin Woodman Paternal Financial, which is a debt-free company with over $11 billion in assets. I like working for companies that are debt-free and that manage money fiscally conservatively. I'm also the executive director for Shady Creek Outdoor Education Foundation and work to raise funds to send our students to Shady Creek and provide access for students to that outdoor science camp, which many of you may remember as Woodleaf. It's now Shady Creek. As I mentioned, I'm an ambassador for the U of Sutter Chamber of Commerce. I'm the past chair of the ambassadors, and for the past two consecutive years, the ambassador of the year, which is given to me as an award for the countless hours that I put into our community. I have outside a handout that lists just some of the highlights of what I've been involved in this past year. I'd like to share those with you. My vision for U of City is, as I am also a planning commissioner, is to have this be a wonderful place to live, to lead our community in employment opportunities, and now my time's up, so I'm sure we'll get to those comments. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to mention now that everybody is in the room and seated that tonight's forum is being streamed live on YouTube through the city's YouTube channel, youtube.com/ubacityca. It's also being recorded and will be available, I guess, tonight later on that channel. Also, within three days, the Appeal Democrat website will have their own video of this forum and our earlier one this evening available on their website. So plenty of opportunities and a couple of different ways for people to see tonight's forum, so please spread the word. We're going to start our first question again. Each candidate has one minute to answer the question, and the candidate answering first gets a 30-second rebuttal after the other four have answered. So we'll start. All right, we'll start with Stan. The U of Sutter Economic Development Corporation -- by the way, this is a question from someone out in the audience. The U of Sutter Economic Development Corporation is a vital component for business and commercial growth in our community. Currently, U of City is not a member of this corporation. Should U of City be a participating member, and what actions would you take regarding this issue? Or if you are incumbent, what actions have you taken regarding this issue? Stan, we'll start with you.
Well, I've already been in conversations with the economic development officer of U of City to try to work out a way that there could be two approaches to economic development because there aren't just one path to travel on that. U of County uses their own economic development officer, and they are also a part of the U of Sutter EDC. I think working from all sides and all opportunities are absolutely necessary to be successful. So partnership is together will be necessary. I will continue to -- one of the problems also of not being a part of the EDC, which is part of the DEA, which is the national organization, is that most of the funds available to a community aren't available unless you're a member. So I think it's very important that U of City very seriously look at rejoining and participating and getting funds that are not available at this time to them, tapping into another source that's necessary. Preet?
As far as the economic development, it is critical that we play a high role in that in order to create the jobs. We need to have open communication, cut out the red tape, and get straight to business. I know we've always been indicated to be tough on being business-friendly. We need to open those doors, lay out the red carpet for businesses to come in. Just as a planning -- on the planning commission, we get items in there, and we always indicate the process tends to be a little bit long. So when the businesses come in, they'll be looking at various areas such as healthcare, the unemployment rate in our area. They also look at the education values. So those are all things when we look at economic development, we need to ensure that we look at the quality of our entire community in order to bring those businesses and attract them here. I think we're starting to get out of time, but definitely open the doors for businesses to ask the questions, lead the way, answer their questions, and move on.
John?
You know, U of City was part of the U of Sutter Economic Development Corporation. U of City was voted to be removed by the current board from that body, and it was done after the 2008 downturn in the economy in which U of City chose to spend money in different ways to fund its economic development opportunities. As a result, when I became mayor, I pulled together a meeting, and in that meeting, I brought in the executive director, brought in staff from U of City, and learned very quickly in a two-hour, very difficult meeting to sit through, that there was no interest from the U of Sutter Economic Development Corporation members to have U of City back on. We will do everything we can. We will continue to try to become part of that body in the future, and we will move forward towards that effort. I will promise you that. I will continue to work on that program.
Daria?
I have met with the director of the EDC, the U of Sutter EDC, and much of what is being discussed as having occurred with the break several years ago was also prior to her term there. So I think that there is an opportunity for U of Sutter EDC and U of City Economic Development to collaborate, to move our community together, further it more effectively than perhaps it has been in that juncture. So I agree with what John is saying, that there is opportunity moving, but there is that opportunity to move forward and bring them back together perhaps.
Jason?
Every time we talk about this, we talk about committees and more committees and this kind of thing, I think we need to go back to our business owners, our developers. We always hear of things coming to U of City that they come and look, oh, we're going to get this. We don't see it. Why is that? I think we need to ask ourselves a serious question, what is going on at City Hall and what is going on there that people come, look around, and then they leave, and nothing ever happens? And we need to talk to our local business owners. I have been doing this and asking them, what is keeping them here and what is driving them away? And this is something we need to do. We need to get these people in a room and figure out what is going to entice them to stay and draw new businesses here. Economic development, I don't think we need to go outside of our city for more economic development. We know what we need here. The businesses that are here know what we need here, and I think that's a better way to go than going outside and getting something from somebody here, somebody that doesn't live here. I think we need to get back to our city and ask them the question. Thank you.
And Stan, would you like to add anything to that?
The only thing I would have --
Three seconds, please.
Thank you. The only thing I would have to say here is that the local EDC is made up of local business representatives and government electives. It's a good combination. We would like -- I know I'm sitting on it, and I have done outreach to try to find out how to bring U of City back without even before I even thought of running for city council, trying to find the paths to make that happen. And I fully expect that within two years, we will be back together, bigger, better, and stronger. Thank you.
Our next question is for Preet, another question from the public. Although reportedly getting a little bit better, there are reports that the working relationship between the city and county has been less than what it should be. How important is a smooth-running, open relationship, and what can be done to improve it?
Absolutely. We need that communication between the county as well as the city. I know all of the board of supervisors, as being a planning commissioner there back in 2004, and continued those open doors, and been in touch with Supervisor Munger, Jim Whitaker, and so on, to keep the doors open. We talk about issues if there are any issues that we need to talk about. Those doors need to continue to stay open. We are collaboration. We're within that county, and those doors need to stay open for a better quality of life for all citizens within Sutter County as well as within the city.
John Buckland?
You know, cooperation is everything, especially when you're in Sutter County. It's a small county. We have 95,000 people, 63,000 live inside the city. We need to have a cooperative opportunity between both U of City and Sutter County. As mayor, I met with the chairman of the board of Sutter County Supervisors, Mr. Jim Whitaker, and we put together a joint meeting of U of City Council and the supervisors. That was a very productive meeting. At the end of about two hours, we were able to come to some resolutions that where we could move forward jointly, where we could support each other, where we would continue to support each other. Some of the scale meeting that's happened is just, it's almost a ridiculous turn of events, and when we finally work things out, like the Sutter County Animal Services Authority, when we finally work it out, the building ends up costing millions of dollars more. We got that done. I came on, we had that building up and ready to roll in three years. So I look forward to doing more work with Sutter County.
Daria Ali.
Thank you, Bob. The city and the county have had a strained relationship, and it has had moments when it's improved, and the challenge of the shelter was one of those that's of recent significance to our community. I think it's important that we keep communication open and that the meetings that were mentioned by John occur on a more regular basis to bring and bridge that gap that is occurring. Because U of City is two-thirds of the population of the county, it's an important and vital voice in what needs to happen for the city. And it's also important, from my perspective, to look at the broader regional concept of our county and our other areas here that can help to move our economy forward.
Jason Reckert?
I am total agreement with that. We really need to work together with our county, and we have to get that under control to where that's the way we're going to bring business back, is we need to bring the county and the city together. I mean, I'm not going to beat it to death because obviously we're all in agreement that we have to work together. That's all I got.
Stan?
Miscommunication and misunderstanding is always the crux of a matter. Regulations governing a county are much more stringent since we are a direct division of the corporation, a municipal corporation of a state. Cities do not have the restrictions and regulations that counties have. Part of the misunderstanding had to do with the whole JPA understanding that the level you have to do is step up to the next level. Once that was understood, many of the things that we were discussing went away. We were able to get on the same page. While there was still some difficulties involved in that, dealing with employees, we were able to finally work those out in over the next couple of years. Those ideas or those leftover situations will be completely eliminated, but I think it's just miscommunication mostly is what is happening.
And Preet, do you have anything further?
Not really. I think we're just all echoing the same thing. It's pretty much open doors, open communication. It's a better way of running a business, running a city, running a county. It's clear that's what we need to do, and I think we're going to be on the right page. We continue to do that. We'll make the right decisions.
Okay, thank you. Angel?
All right, this time we'll start with you, John. And this question comes from the audience. How do you propose to deal with the city's unfunded liability in its retirement system? Are you in favor of setting realistic age restrictions or reducing benefits? And do you believe that fire and police employees should be treated differently than other employees in the system?
Wonderful question, because the unfunded liability is part of doing business. It is part of the retirement system. We do need to attack this piece by piece. This is part of negotiations with employee groups, and we have peeled back some of what the purse that we deal with, the public employees' retirement system. We have peeled back some of the extra added values to that. Police and fire have been absolutely forthcoming in making some of those reductions. The other employee groups have also done that. Management has done that, and I am very proud of the employee group here at U of City in making efforts to reduce and knowing that they need to reduce it. Come to tomorrow night's council meeting, you'll see what happened with police and fire. Are they being treated differently? Absolutely not. But please come and pay attention to potentially what we may ask for an employee concession package.
Thank you. Daria?
Thank you, Angel. That's also a good question. How do I propose to deal with the unfunded liabilities? I've looked at the proposals and looked at the next eight to 10 years that we are still going to be struggling with this issue. So do I have a swift answer to that question? Absolutely not. There's a lot of pieces that, as a candidate, I am not in -- I do not know all of those moving pieces. I am a financial representative. I am aware of pensions and funding pensions, and so I do bring that unique background to this. I've also dealt with $50 million budgets, which is very similar to U of City's budget. And so I think that that does qualify me to look at this from a different perspective once I have all the information in front of me. Do I think we'll change it with tomorrow night's vote? No.
Jason?
Right, so to that effect is you made a promise to the people. Anybody out there with a retirement understands that, that you can't take that away, and you're going to have to make concessions to pay that. But the fact of the matter is, is we don't need to continue it with new employees. New employees, you could drop off some and change what you're going to promise them later on in the future. That's what's going to have to happen. We cannot continue this with public employees to continue to promise and pay this ongoing. It's going to have to drop. But you cannot change what you've already promised, so we're going to have to find concessions to make those payments. But beyond that, as far as fire and police, it is a different entity, and I'm not going to make any friends with this, but the fact of the matter is, is it is a different entity, and they do put more on, a little bit more on the line. I believe they are entitled to a minimal, minimal amount more, but they are entitled to it, I believe. But like I say, everybody's going to cut back, so we're going to cut them back also because we have to hold them to the promises we've made, but change what we don't have to do anymore.
Stan?
At the county level, we have made significant changes to the pension available there, although some of them will not be able to be felt until the future. But the city and any agency can ask current employees to change their pension agreement. They don't have to agree to. They can ask to trade other benefits for changes. All these things need to be on the table. It's not just about the pension. It's the overall benefit package. We need to make sure that the benefit package is well-balanced, that there are not things in that full benefit package that are unnecessary and frivolous, that actually make it more expensive than is necessary. Also, the state has made some movements and decisions that are going to implement many changes. I think it's by 2018, there will be implementation of those, where the share will be much higher for the employees to be paying. So we are moving in that direction at the county and the city level, and I think we will succeed.
Thank you. Preet?
I actually met with our budget officer within the city. I actually met with our city managers to go over some of these numbers, and I was pleased to say when I sat down and actually crunched down some of those numbers that we do have light at the end of the tunnel from the projections that I saw. It looks like incrementally, there is processes that are taking place. I know we may not see them upfront, and it's hard. I myself have gone through furloughs, so I understand how difficult that is. But as far as providing and filling in for that unfunded liability, there are steps that are being taken. Negotiations are happening. Some of them are done. But what I saw today is down the road in a couple of years, hopefully all of this will be taken care of for the most part, and we can move forward and hopefully have a surplus after that. So that's the light at the end of the tunnel. I did look at the budget very closely.
John, did you have anything to add? 30 seconds.
I do have. We do have a split retirement system. With police alone, we moved their age from 50 for retirement to 55. For the miscellaneous employees, we moved them up from 55 to 60. These are all important issues in trying to peel back some of our unfunded liability. Again, there are so many things that we're doing, and we can't just exchange $1 for the next dollar. When we get a concession from the employees, we can't just turn around and under the table give it right back to them. That doesn't get us forward.
Thank you. Okay, Daria, this question will start with you again. It's another question from the public. On September 2nd, the U of City City Council voted to give a rate reduction to the city's businesses but not to its residences for trash pickup. And I understand the county has agreed to do this, to this arrangement as well. This is a $1 million reduction that amounts to an average of $5.50 per business per month. Do you agree with this decision, or do you feel that the residents should have shared in the savings at an estimated $50? shared in the savings at an estimated 50 cents per month? Daria?
That's also a very good question, Bob. I have spoken to many sides of this issue. Recology was brought into this initially, into the issue that there was a rate reduction. There have been standardized rates for some time now where there might be an increase or a decrease, but we don't see them as consumers. The 5.50 a month to the commercial businesses, having been a business owner and having had two storefronts and paid the CAM on two of them, the common area maintenance, I know that it's very difficult to pay all of those fees. And the 5.50 doesn't sound much, but it does add up when you have multiple sites. I do think that the city and the jurisdictions that were involved in that decision have looked at this very judiciously and are representing the city in this. Yes, I would like to see a reduction in my bill, but I think it would amount to a dollar a month. So I don't see that as making a lot of difference.
Jason?
All right, it was 50 cents a month and that equals to $6 a year. What we did get out of that was we did get a 1% turnaround to the city streets that's going to benefit all of us. I think that is a feasible rate to trade off, to keep the street in front of your house looking nice and comparable. Granted, $6 a year is something, but is it enough to give up repairs to our streets? I don't think it is. And I think it was very well put forward by the staff and by our city council. That is something that they did that I actually agree with. I mean, it was a good turnaround for us. I think that's a good investment for $6 a month, I mean, $6 a year, excuse me, that we're going to not get back, that is going to keep our streets decent for the extra weight going down there.
Stan?
The application of this, which yes, the county agreed to also, is because the commercial rates have been heavy in the past. Many other agencies throughout the state also lean heavy on their commercial rates and basically it's almost punishing the businesses on their rates. So the action agreed upon by the county and the city is a good first action. But the next time that something comes forward for a reduction, it must be across the board because that is, that should be the way it is and that should be all, no matter if it's 50 cents or 30 cents, it should be equally divided out at that time. And so that's really all I have to say on that matter. Preet?
Rates are a very complex issue. So when the officials have to look at what's going on and when there's a rate reduction, the whole picture has to be looked at. And in this case, the reduction on one side was helping another area. And so I'm, I'm full force in ensuring that our roads, streets and so forth are taken care of. That's part of our community. It's the value that we put on our community to ensure that it's healthy in those regards. So when we do those type of rate reductions, everything has to be looked at. There are regulations and standards that have to play a part, but I think in the situation when the big picture's taken a look at, we're, we're actually putting those monies into the appropriate areas.
John?
Thank you, Jason, for agreeing with something that the council did on the, on the second that I do appreciate. This is not about recology. This is about a decision made by local government and specifically about Uba City Council. Those businesses are owned by our residents. Our residents are getting a reduction. That's first and foremost. It's important when you have businesses that are 14% out that you look at that. During our franchise agreement, during the modeling of that program, we looked at that. One of my arguments was they're too high for commercial. We, we moved forward, we're to the point where we made that decision. We made it legally, we did it the right way, we did it in a public forum and I stand behind that decision 100%. We will continue to look at rates over time and we will impact what each one of our people are paying, what residents are paying. And don't forget, when we start repairing those streets with some of that money, that's money that doesn't come out of your pocket.
Daria, you have 30 seconds to rebuttal.
Thank you. Yes, I agree that it had nothing to do with recology and that it was not a tax and many of the other things that have been mentioned in this process. I agree that the money to be used for our city streets is a wonderful idea because that is part of the public safety that I'm looking to see occur in the city of Uba City. Some of, it is important, just like police and fire, that our roads are safe to travel. And I'm grateful for that decision and I applaud the city council for making it.
Thank you. Angel?
All right, in terms of economics, if I had a dollar for every time campaign season comes along and every candidate says, "Jobs is important," I'd be rich. And then of course, but the government can't do anything about it, we're not in the business of doing it, I'd be double rich. So let's get down to brass tracks and, and say, there's got to be something that can be done. So Jason, we're going to start with you. Over the past eight years, the city's economic and job growth has been stagnant. It's actually been among the worst in this entire nation. What must be done to quickly improve this situation?
I'm actually glad you asked that question and that's one that I'm proud to start with on my first go around. What we've got here is we've got, it comes back to you, you hear about all the businesses sniffing around and then they leave. We've got to make it economically feasible to come to this city. We've got to make it economically feasible to be able to afford a house in this city. To put a shovel in the ground in the, in the city limits is more than any other place in California. It's, it's absolutely absurd. And we've got to really take a look and maybe do an audit of our fees and fee structure in the city. We've got to get these fees down. The impact fees are astronomical for builders and developers and that just isn't for builders and developers. At that point, it gets fed back to the people, you sitting here. You're paying more for your house because of the impact fees. We just built the dog shelter that now is going to cost us $105 more for every house it's built because they didn't pay attention to the checkbook.
This is a unique situation because Uba City, when it comes to developing jobs and retaining jobs, good pain is not an island due to the fact that Sutter County is actually the driving force of the economics of Uba City also. Agriculture and then anything that supports it, ag-related. Sutter County had policies first that hindered the ability for Uba City to have a strong partner in economic development and growth and in finances. One of the biggest things that I had worked on and the other board members was to change our general plan to where instead of saying it was business friendly, but it really is. We are in the final adoption process of these new policies that, that have made Sutter County an attraction to growth. We are very busy at expanding our agricultural processing and growth. So that is one of the areas where we're bringing here to where now the partnership that is laid out to be partners, now we can move forward helping Uba City.
Preet?
What we can do is start here locally. We need to reach out to our local businesses. We need to have a collaboration with our students, do some training opportunities where we bring in these kids, kind of like an internship. It's a win-win situation. We teach our kids about the work ethic. We also treat, teach them a trade. The businesses themselves gain staff to help them out and hopefully even produce a bigger business for them. So we need to just reach out first locally right here and help our local businesses increase their business and increase our students to be more involved in the economic area. So that's one of the areas that we can actually do right now. If our local businesses and our schools, we all venture out, produce programs. I remember growing up having a ROP program. That's almost non-existent right now. Those are some of the things that we need to probably reach out again.
John?
Impact fees are a huge item. They always bring up some controversy in Uba City. Uba City's currently only collecting 60% of its residential impact fees when we build and that's about $15,000. Those will move up over time as the economy improves. But don't forget that the schools also collect $2.60 a square foot on every residence that's built. Sutter County collects $3,500 and we have a levy fee of about another $2,500. All of those fees are collected up. All of those look like they're all coming from Uba City. They're not. The animal shelter, did we kick up the fee on that? Yeah, we're watching the checkbook. We borrowed money from ourselves. It's for the future. That money has to be paid back and that way to do that is through impact fees. Each one of those new residences will have an impact on, on the services provided at that shelter.
Daria?
Okay, so the question started out with jobs and the impact fees do impact our area because they are high and there is still some conflict with that. Uba County was able to lower their impact fees while Sutter County was looking at raising theirs, which that with a zero growth comment for the next 10 years at a government affairs committee meeting. So they're looking at rearranging that so that there can be an improvement. My thought is that as Preet mentioned, there is a junior achievement program that's developing here and ROP is coming back to life. Those are all opportunities, but we need to create an environment that is friendly to business, attractive to business and a community that invites our educated children to come back. We only have 3% of our educated children come back to this area and I would like to be part of changing that environment.
Jason, would you like to add anything to that 30 seconds?
Yes, I would. I understand that we did reduce our residential fee somewhat, but the problem is, is we didn't touch on any other fees. No commercial, no multifamily, nothing. We need to address all the fees across the board to make it feasible to come back to Uba City.
Thank you. Okay, our next question starts with Stan and another question from the public. As a city council member, you may need to vote on the issuance of economic development incentives to garner and possibly retain new businesses such as a new car dealership. Should an existing large employer or high tax generating business that is considering locating or expanding in Uba City ask for an incentive such as a tax break? Would you be in favor of granting incentives?
Excellent question. I'm going to have to say at this time, I would be willing to grant a temporary delay or postponement of a fee for one to two years staged. I've heard the number of, bandied around about $500,000 impact fees or, or costs that they're going to have to have for rebuilding or retooling up their dealership that's looking at coming in. And delaying it for one year, a proportion of it, I would be in favor of looking at that. But other types of incentives that we have tried in the county before actually do not work. Reducing impact fees right from the very beginning, making them appropriate, eliminating impact fees that there's no reason for them to be there, those are the primary areas that we need to be looking at and especially when you're dealing with infill projects. You already have infrastructure, we already have everything there. Why are we charging so much on infill projects?
Preet?
Absolutely. I think incentives should be considered at this time when the economic downfall is happening. Hopefully it will start creeping up and it is starting to do that, but I think incentives are helpful. Looking at impact fees, there's also charges that we do when there's amendments that are done. So those all need to be taken into consideration in a, in an area when the economic, the economic environment is down. We need to provide and be more business friendly, allow businesses to have that open door communication with us and be able to kind of compromise and work out situations so businesses can come in here. If we continue to push away and stay very strict, we'll never get the businesses here. We won't create those jobs that we really want. So we've got to open the doors and to consider some incentives? Absolutely, absolutely. And times change, so look at the changing environment. We've got to keep up with that.
John?
Let's be clear, Uba City only collects $11 million in sales tax from our businesses here. And when someone comes in and wants a huge portion of that or wants a percentage of that, is that fair to the other businesses that are generating that sales tax? I think when we look at incentive programs, we need to look at some index number dealing with our sales tax and they'll provide that back to our community on a buy local program, shop local program, local auto dealer program, those kind of things. Those need to be explored. We need to really look at those with in great depth to see what we can do to help not only the business that wants to relocate here and take money, but also those that are here and have been here for 30, 40 years and have struggled for the last five years.
Daria?
So I agree with both what Preet and John have said. I do think the key word is some incentives and, and as John mentioned, it should go to all businesses. We've just, have opened one new dealership and a second one is about to open and we would invite somebody else in that is brand new and give them incentives that haven't been given to the existing businesses. I, I don't see that as a positive. I think the idea of having something that would help existing businesses would be of benefit to us and I think also that we need to create an environment that is conducive to bringing more businesses and more opportunities to our community.
Jason?
It comes back to fees again and you know, we're not going to be able to reduce all the fees. We're not, I mean, I would like to say we could reduce all the fees and not have them there at all, but the fact of the matter is, is what if we made it conducive to a business plan to where they could put it out a couple of years? We're still going to get the money in the long term, but we're going to put it out for a few years to where they're paying extra on their taxes to catch up their fees. At least they can fit it in a business plan to where they're not paying it all upfront and they know they got a chance to make it up over the next few years. There's multiple ways to look at this, but we have to get something going instead of spinning our tires to get the businesses here and helping out the local businesses. The local businesses are key also and like Stan said, Stan hit it really on the head with the infill projects. The infrastructure's there. We do not need to charge on that amount that we're, that is consistent across the board if we cut the infill projects down on their impact fees. The streets are in. Maybe we have them do some maintenance on the streets that are around them, but we do not need to charge the same amount on our infill projects. My time's up.
Stan, anything to add?
I've almost forgot. I almost forgot what the question, I got so absorbed into what was going on because with only one minute, it's very difficult to be able to really save a full picture because all of these solutions are part of it in this time, in this question. There's no one answer on this question for, for the, for this. But I know that many of the economic difficulties discussed on this and how to do, achieve this, I've had the privilege of being part of those solutions in the county and we've achieved many of these changes and implement, are beginning to implement them. So we will be tested at the county level as to whether I was successful with the board.
We have time for one more question and Andrew, I'm going to give you a heads up over there. We're going to pause right after the answers go around for this question and let you quickly change your tape before the closing comments.
Well, here we go. We'll start with Preet. This is also from the audience. Uba City is filling in the Hillcrest water wells. Do you support this action and do you believe that surface water is and will be adequate for Uba City needs now and in the future?
My gosh, with the drought that's happening right now, any water issue is a huge concern. We need to look at all options at every level. My lawn is dying. I'm sure it is with everybody else, but we really, really need to look at our water options and what's out there, what's going to be best for the community. There is a Prop 1 out there, which is a bond, a water bond, $7.5 million water bond that includes, you know, all levels of water issues. So take a look at that, the, anything concerned with water, definitely.
John?
If the wells are contaminated, fill them in. If they're dilapidated, going to create more maintenance, get rid of the tanks that are with them. We have a surface water system. It's a good system. It is a reliable. It is a reliable water system. Unfortunately, what the state giveth, the state taketh away. When you negotiate with them, it's in good faith. They give you an allocation of water. When a drought happens, they take it away. Thank goodness, the citizens of Uba City have been diligent in conserving water, and we have some excess that has been banked over time. We still have those in our water agreements. We water our parks with wells. We do a number of projects here to try to eliminate or reduce our impact on our system, and we have explored and will continue to explore storage in an aquifer on the north side of town. That will be for emergency cases where we may be able to draw from that in future drought years. It's not going to end this year. Droughts come and go. This is California.
Daria?
So, yes, we are in a drought, and the Hillcrest water wells that are contaminated, they're contaminated. They shouldn't be watering, and then that's running into our water systems. I agree with responding to those in the fashion of shutting them down, and the dilapidated ones, and not issuing new permits on those because the people have the same access to water that we do in the community, in the same quality of water that we do that are in that area. I think conservation is important, and I think as a community, we have to continue to look at conserving because if we don't have rain this year, we're going to have a more serious situation next year. So, I applaud the city for sending out the letters telling us all to step back our watering and hope that all of you in this room have complied with that. Water is important. I can't imagine turning on my faucet and not having water.
Jason?
I'm not well versed on the subject at all, but the fact of the matter is, if the water is contaminated, then we do need to fill in the wells. And they do all have water out there, so it isn't like we're taking water away from anybody. We're actually just going to fill in something that's contaminated. I say, we continue with it.
There?
Water, one of the items that I have, the main item that I have absorbed my life in from the time that it leaves the clouds to the time it goes back up and how it gets everywhere. I've been on GWR committees and boards and discussions on groundwater, in groundwater storage, monitoring of them at the county level. Uba City has been a good partner in discussing some of these things and on one of our committees. The choices they have made have been difficult. They've tried to do what they can to make it happen. I think they've done some good decisions. The abandonment of the wells, I do not know what the level of contamination was, if it was arsenic or nitrate or whatever. So, that would be the major question to find out that as to whether it would need to be abandoned or not because blending can be done to reduce the contaminants down to the proper levels. So, you know, water has been a major part of my life, all up and down the state, North State, so I would be good, I hope, to address this at the city level.
Preet, did you have anything to add to that, to 30 seconds?
No, just really just echoing the saying, we need to take care of our water. We need, the citizens of Uba City, all of us need it, and so we need to ensure that we are at top level and taking care of those issues.
All right. Thank you.
We'll get to our closing remarks in just a moment.
I'm going to go back to my principles that I started with when I first ran for office. They have not changed. They're the same. We deserve city councilperson who will work to ensure the government is open, accountable, and responsive to the needs of every citizen. Each resident should have accessibility to our council members, their ear, and regardless of their social and financial status. I believe that I have fulfilled this throughout the community from the top to the bottom, being involved in many of the English as a Second Language at the library, citizenship program, and naturalization ceremony due to our support of that at the library. The federal government asked to come here to hold special meetings and the naturalization I would do the same if I were elected to Uba City. I would continue the same principles of elected officials that put your interests ahead of their own, to not be partial. Everybody has full access 24/7. It's been that way. Occasionally, it's been early morning calls, but fully accessible. The main thing is, is our economic, how we're going to get to our economic strength. Working together with Sutter County as a partner is essential, developing new paths to make this happen. I think that my experience at solving many of these problems within the county or setting the pathway, setting the foundation for the county to build on in the future is what I can bring to Uba City and continue that within the major population of Uba City and serve the people to the best of my abilities. Thank you for this opportunity. Looking forward to serve you.
Preet?
I want to just go ahead and add a few personal notes. As a woman, I have the utmost respect and gratitude to our former mayors and council members, Karen Cardasselli and Leslie McBride, for being our voice. It's about time that we have a woman's voice again on city council. As a single parent raising a beautiful child, my focus has and always will be children in mind. It is our obligation to provide them a foundation to grow and thrive in the future. As city council, my focus will be exactly that. As a planning commissioner and chairperson, I have contributed to the betterment of our community, and I hope to continue to do so. Over the years, you've seen me out there with the kids, at least I'm trying to keep up with them, and I'm not about to stop. I will continue to do my work with the children. I will focus on programs and activities which are conducive to their well-being and their social being, and work on strategic development plans which will foster their economic environment so that we can provide them good paying jobs and hopefully have them back in our community after they finish their education, as I did myself. Industries, special fields, technology, you name it, let's open the doors for them. The future depends on what we do today, so we need to continue to expect more. Our community can grow by choice or by chance. I choose choice. I hope you do as well. Franklin Roosevelt once said, "We can't always build the future for our children, but we can build the children for our future." And I hold very strong to my own words. It's about our children, our community, and our future. I have the great honor and earned the endorsements of the Firefighters Association Local 3793, the Sutter Yubac County Employees Local 1, as well as the Operating Engineers Local 3. And I've also received and the honor of the endorsement from Karen Cardasselli and Supervisor Larry Munger. And I hope to have your vote November 4th so we can continue our path in the better qual, in path in the quality of, she's waving me down, quality of life for you, our residents of Uba City, and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
John?
Again, thank each of you for being here. It's important that you're here. It's important that you hear what was said up here tonight. You're involved in this community. More people are. They just couldn't be here tonight. But we are proud of this community. We want to build a community that is responsive to the needs of our citizens, and I think we do that. The city of Uba City is second to none in its quality of life and raising families here. Why do we choose to be here? Because we love this community. Our youth are important. Going into the schools and meeting with them and working with their life management classes are important. And I hear oftentimes that kids don't want to return to Uba City after an hour, an hour and a half in lecture with them. I give them everything that Uba City has to offer. By the end of the class, by the end of the class, 60% of them raise their hands and say that at this time, they would like to return. At the beginning of the class, I only see maybe one or two hands. They want to come back here. They want to live with their families here. They want to be part of this community. They're vital to our community, and we need to continue to grow our community in a substantial way that provides that quality of life that each of us seeks. You're important. You get to make three choices for city council. Tonight, you've looked at five. You get to pick on Election Day those individuals that you want to represent this city to lead this city forward for the next four years and be an integral part of a team that continues to do for you its very best. Thank you.
Daria?
Well, thank you. Thank you, Uba Sutter Chamber of Commerce. Thank you, Appeal Democrat KUBA, and all of you who are here and supporting us this evening in this forum with your questions. I have a lifelong family connection to Sutter County and a tireless dedication to making a positive difference. I'm single. I have launched two children from this community who have not returned, although they are extremely successful in their careers. I would like to create an environment here that would be conducive to bringing our educated children back to this community. We have a rich heritage, and I think that we need to take hold of that and own what we have here to make it the place that, to recognize ourselves, what we have here and opportunity, and make it the attractive place for business, for families, while still maintaining the agricultural lands in the rural field. I have worked with children in this community. I'm the executive director of Shady Creek Foundation, which tells you that I'm committed to the children. I have been the chair of, the president of the Alliance for Hispanic Advancement and chaired their scholarship and education committee for seven years, expanding it by 300% and providing scholarships to all cultures and from not just freshmen in college, but through their senior year so that they also have a connection to us and want to bring back those skills to this community. I appreciate the Junior Achievement Committee that is working here. I think that those are all pieces of the puzzle. There is a large movement for making this a tourism destination. Now, we have five rivers here. We have an airport where people fly in to enjoy what we have. We need to own it, and we need to move this community forward.
Jason?
I'd like to thank everybody for coming out tonight. I mean, it's great that we have this kind of turnout. The room is almost packed. This is awesome. We really need to get back to this on our city council meetings. You guys need to be an integral part of what's going on. I want to be your voice. Your voice will be heard through me, I promise. This has got to change. We need this kind of turnout all the time with you people. This is awesome. I mean, we really need to get back and get the citizens involved because right now, it doesn't feel like to me that the businesses and the citizens have a voice whenever it comes to the decisions being made. With that being said, people want to be here. I agree with that statement, but we're not making it feasible for them to be here. We've got to have the jobs. We've got to have the economic development for those jobs to come here. Right now, we don't have it. It's not feasible to come to Uba City whenever you can go to Roseville or Sacramento and have more of a pull from people. We've got to figure out what they're doing to get this done because the fact of the matter is, until we decide to make a move to where it's going to be a little bit tighter on the city to get these people here and get our business owners here to lift them up some, we're not going to be able to get the economic growth that we want. That being said, I love this town. We all do. We're here. We're making it work, even though times are tight. We've really got to come together and figure out what needs to be done with the city to bring the economic development here.
Thank you, and thank you to all five candidates.